Let me just thank all of you for being a little flexible in time of our meeting this morning. Obviously, weather posed some issues for us yesterday. And which reminds me, this would be a good time to really thank all of our city employees for all their hard work for the past couple of days. The street guys and Health and Sanitation for getting all the trees out of the road where people could try to get to where they were going. And then especially yesterday afternoon when Jackson Madison had a fire and all those residents, about 100 residents relocated to the civic center and then on from there to some temporary housing for them. So, again, you've stepped up to the plate and I appreciate what each and every one of you have done. We'll call to order the March 5th meeting, the Jackson City Council. Invocation pledge will be given by Councilman Randy Wallace. If you would, please rise.
Just pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of leadership you have given to the members of this city council. Help us to recognize the wisdom of others and not rely solely on our own opinions. We ask that you guide us so that decisions we make will be pleasing to you and make Jackson a better place to live. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I think you can show all council members present, with the exception of Councilman And let me ask Rusty Stridner, his son, and also Max Allrich to come up, son-in-law. Brooks, sorry. And let me read this proclamation, and if you would, give it on to Billy and Margie Item four on the agenda is approval of minutes of the February 4, 2014, meeting. if you would. Billy is a beloved citizen of our city. And a couple of weeks ago, we had a number of people who met and certainly wanted to Is there corrections or any additions to that? We'll go ahead and accept those as submitted to council. go ahead and honor Billy. Let me remind everyone that's here, item five is invitation for public comment. Billy is struggling with a serious illness, and we want to go ahead and do this and make If any of you have any item that you'd like to be heard on, if you would, make it known this a part of today's meeting. at that time that it'd be any item under new business. Billy Stridner, we're a better city for Billy having shared this city with us, Rusty. We have two proclamations this morning, and I will come down and read those. And we're a better people for having known him. Wonderful individual, and certainly my honor today to read this proclamation and present Before I do that, let me just acknowledge the presence of Bobby King, Mayor of Selmer. it to you, Rusty, and then ask you if you'd like to, to make any comments. Bobby? Where are you? Stand up. It's a proclamation, whereas this proclamation is presented to honor and give recognition Where is he? In Henderson, I'm sorry, in Henderson. And Mike Smith, Director of Southwest HRA. to Mr. Billy Stridner. And whereas Billy Stridner has been married to Margie Monroe Stridner for 58 years and Mike, thank you for being here. And we'll have the proclamations at this point. has two children and two grandchildren. And whereas Billy was a basketball official from 1952 to 1985, a football official from 1953 to 1988, and served as supervisor official with the T double S double A for 60 years, during which time he officiated at the state basketball tournament. He served as a college basketball official for BAC, Gulf South, Ohio Valley, Missouri Valley, and for junior college basketball. And he was a high school softball official for five years. And whereas he was coordinator for T double S double A football championship for 20 years. He was a Gulf South football official for 21 years, officiating at the NCAA Division Two National Football Championship in 1986, two NAIA National Football Championships. And he worked NCAA region championships in football, basketball, baseball, and in the same school year. And whereas Billy helped found the Jackson Madison County Sports Hall of Fame, which began in 1986, he was introduced into National High School Athletic Hall of Fame, the T double S double A Hall of Fame in 1986, and was inducted into Jackson Madison County Sports Hall of Fame. And whereas Billy served as a deacon for Skyline Church of Christ for 42 years, and he served the city of Jackson during the 1990s as a board member for the Recreation Parks Department. Now therefore, I gerr, guess Mayor of the city of Jackson, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March the 5th, 2014, as Billy Stridner Day and encourage all citizens to thank him for his contributions to support in our community. Rusty, it's an honor for me to present this on behalf of Billy. Thank you very much for being here, and if you'd like to come in, come on up.
Thank you. Just a brief word, I'd like to express a deep gratitude and thanks from Mother and Dad. We want to thank you for all the cards, the letters, the calls, the visits during Dad's illness. And this is very, very rewarding to Dad, and he's very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Second proclamation is for American Red Cross Week, and I think we have Dan Nichols, Chairman of that Board here, and Jennifer McCruff, Executive Chief Executive Officer. If y'all will come up, we'll read this and present it to you. Thank you all for what you do. Dan, good to see you. Okay, this is a proclamation, whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our everyday heroes, those who reach out to help other neighbors when they're in need. And whereas American Red Cross heroes are on the front lines every day. They volunteer their time, give blood, take life-saving courses, and provide financial donations to help those in need. And whereas we'd like to remember our heroes here in Jackson, West Tennessee, who give to help people in need. They work tirelessly to help in times of disaster when someone needs life-saving CPR or the comfort of a helping hand. They provide round-the-clock support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and teach life-saving classes in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. And whereas across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responded to hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, and wildfires, the tragedy of the Boston Marathon and Typhoon Hyun in the Philippines. And whereas when injured service member ended up in the hospital far from home, the American Red Cross offers comfort. When hospital patients need blood, American Red Cross blood donors help them. When a lifeguard jumps in to save a drowning child, or someone stepped up to help a heart attack victim, the American Red Cross was there. And whereas we dedicate the month of March to all who support the American Red Cross, a mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergency. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, blood, to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Dan, it's an honor for me to present this to you. Thank you all for your service, and if you'd like to rest, come on up.
First, I'd like to thank the Mayor Gist and the city council and the city of Jackson for recognizing this as Red Cross Month. This month is observed as dedication to the volunteers and everyone who supports our mission of disaster response, home fire response, last night's incident, and everyone that provides service to our military, their families, and the veterans, our training courses and life safety skills, water safety, and first aid. And we're especially grateful for the ongoing support of all the people in the communities in the 10 counties we serve, which enables us to continue this vital work. We would like to strongly encourage everyone to become an everyday hero during Red Cross Month by volunteering their time, signing up for a class in CPR, preparing a disaster plan, or preparing a disaster kit, and especially of all donations. We really appreciate the recognition, and thank you very much.
of one item under new business. That would be item four under new business. If there's no objection, go ahead and handle that one. That's consideration of resolution to honor Billy Stridner by designating a portion of Ridgecrest Road from Dr. Effie Wright Drive to US 70 as Billy Stridner Drive and naming the Omen Arena Basketball Court Billy Stridner Court. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Hang on a second, discussion, council. Council, please vote.
(Inaudible).
Thank you very much for that. Going back to item seven under first readings, consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at 2613 and 2617 North Highland Avenue from RS1 Single Family Residential District to B4 General Business District containing 1.46 acres, more or less, made by Jackson Motor Company. Stan?
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
You have in your packet the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. As you can see on the screen, the location map of these two tracks, they are existing, or they are adjacent to the existing Jackson Motor Company business. They are wanting to expand, so they are looking to acquire these lots and to rezone them to match the zoning on the other property they own. The Planning Commission reviewed this, and they are recommending approval of this rezoning to you.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion.
Have a motion, a second. Okay, before we take a vote, we need to have a public hearing, and I'll ask, is anyone present who'd like to be heard on this matter, either speaking in opposition to or in support of this ordinance? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and council, please vote.
(Inaudible).
Item eight is consideration of ordinance to rezone property located on the west side of North Highland Avenue across from Parker Drive from RS Single Family Residential District to B5 Highway Business District containing 1.63 acres, more or less. Staff initiated rezoning request for Cockton Hill Post 1848 BFW. Council has passed that ordinance on first reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for approvals, a second. Discussion, and council. Council, please vote.
(Inaudible).
Item one under new business is the CRA District Two update and the plan of action presented by Plan Director Stan Pylent and Nell Huspen, if Nell is here, David Hunt, if he's here, and Clarence Boone, who is on that CRA. Stan? Nell? How are you?
Thank you for giving us this time to give you an update. We have been working very hard, Ms. Nell and her group have been working very hard to put together a strategy for redevelopment in District Two, and I know for some, this has been a long time coming. And let me just say that it's been a little bit, I guess, trying to find the right project because one of the things that we did not want to do is to start something and not be able to either finish it or to have the impact that we wanted to see happen in District Two. District Two started a little bit after District One, so they've had a little bit less time. But in the time that we've had, we think we've got a really good strategy now. We've selected a target area, which we refer to as the Whitehall Lexington Hayes Target Area, and now we've got the first projects that we wish to start in this targeted area. The CRA has reviewed this target area, has approved of these projects, and we want to present those to you today. So, at this time, I'll let Ms. Nell talk a little bit about the projects that we've got upcoming. We also have representatives from Southwest that are here that can answer any questions about the role that they are going to play in that project.
Good morning, Mayor and councilperson. Thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. Stan has mentioned it's been a long time coming, but it's finally made it here, we think. And our first project that we're going to initiate is Project One of New Homes and Development along Whitehall, and we have a partnership with Southwest Human Resource Agency, and Mr. Smith and Ms. Pickler are here to answer any questions and explain it further than what I possibly will be able to do. CRA will convey five properties directly to Southwest, who will contractually be obligated to build five homes. And I thought we have this showing that you can, and I won't insult your intelligence by reading, but you can read. The projects are going to be conveyed upon, are built on properties that will be conveyed by the city to CRA that these homes can be built. The street addresses are included there, that you can see where they are, they're in census tract and block group. And when I finish with this part, Ms. Pickler will show you, I'll give you some pictures that you'll be able to get a view of what we're talking. You do have included in your packet the area maps of the areas, but she will be able to give you more. The source of funding will come from a CBD 108 loan and the amount of $655,000. We will, we hope to move forward quickly, or as soon as the weather breaks, to make these projects become, or to come in fruition. The construction will be done, as you can see, and it's lined, the line items are budgeted. And the final line of that is the, it's a $655,000 project. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Pickler if she'd come, or Mr. Smith, if they would come and add further information to what we've presented here.
Patty, come on up. Patty is with the Southwest HRA in Henderson.
These properties are properties, I wanted you to say what our agency has, excuse me. These are properties that our agency has either built new on Morgan Street. The first picture is one of the Morgan Street projects that we built. And we're in hopes of continuing that type of housing down Whitehall. These houses, we hope to be brick instead of the wood siding that is on Whitehall, that is on Morgan, excuse me. We will build the house, market, and sell it, and then we take the proceeds from the sale of the houses to reinvest into additional houses. So you see there were seven properties actually listed. Our initial contract will be for five, with the proceeds going from the sale of those to it built at least an additional two houses. So, we will have special financing attached to those houses. The area, 80% of the area median income will be the income guidelines for the families to meet in the sale of that. We will offer a $10,000 soft second mortgage for five years. That will be forgiven, but during that five years, also, they must allow us to conduct semi-annual inspections of the homes to make sure that they are kept properly according with city ordinance. And they will also sign a covenant for that area to upkeep the property. Any questions?
Any questions from council as far as that particular project in District Two?
We are trying to do this in clusters so that we can make an impact on the area. There is a stretch of three or four properties close to NEF and Whitehall that we will be developing and then cluster around the Dupree and Tomlin area.
One question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
On the project number one description, you've got the economic financial impact to the city, it'll be $20,000 per year in property taxes. So it'll be on five homes? I'm a little confused on that one. In description, that very first page.
That is one of the things, because those properties will go back on the city for taxes. It will come off of the city as non-tax, and will go back on that when we complete.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, but I'm just, my question is, is that's a pretty large figure. Is that?
Yeah, I'm not sure, Randy, where that figure came from. I just say that these properties will generate some tax revenue, so.
They're nowhere near $20,000.
I doubt it.
Okay. We got our decimal place off there, maybe?
More like in the, you know, $5,000 or $6,000 range.
These houses are going to be in the $100,000 price range.
I bet that should have been $2,000 instead of $20,000.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds more like it.
Any other questions from council? And the location, Patty is.
Well, I've got, these are the, these are the addresses of the properties. They're, again, they're clustered around.
That group from 621 to 631 is close to NEF and Whitehall. And then the rest of them are close to the Dupree, the 530 Whitehall, the 194 Dupree, and the Tomlin Street are all across from each other at the end of Dupree. We're trying to pick corner lots so you make an impact as you're going down Whitehall.
Once the weather breaks and you're allowed to start, what's the estimated time of completion on these properties?
I don't have an estimation. It will depend on, it takes, we usually bid out projects for three to six months to build a house, depending on the time of the year and the weather. And we have a fairly lengthy list of approved contractors, so I'm hoping that several will be involved, where we can be doing maybe two or three at a time.
I have a question. How would these homes be advertised to prospective homeowners?
We are working with Cowell Bankers, with Tara Skinner and Eden Smith, in helping us with the marketing and selling of that. Tara's been very instrumental in the East Jackson real estate business.
Okay, council, any other questions or comment as to this particular project?
Mayor, I'd just like to say that our agency's excited to be involved in this project. We've been involved in the development over in the Lambeth area, and you can see the fruits of the labor over there, and hopefully this can be converted over into East Jackson area. Our agency's excited to be involved. We served about 88,000 people last year, and a large majority of those people were in Jackson Madison County, so we're excited to be partnering with our good friends in East Jackson, and I think this project would be something we can all be proud of.
Good. Thank you, Mike. Southwest HRA has been a tremendous ally of the city in building affordable homes, and we look forward to their continued participation with us, and especially the CRA for their alliance that's been created there.
Mayor, we have one other project. On your screen, you'll see the area. For those that are familiar, this is the old EL Morgan property. It's a property that has been sort of in stasis because of some underground tanks that were located on the site, and there had to be some cleanup done on the site. There was some contamination, not great, given the age of those tanks, but it was some. And the Tennessee Division of Underground Storage Tanks has got a contractor working on the cleanup of that site. It is jointly owned by the county and the city. Once this is cleaned up, our goal is to acquire this property from the city and the county to the CRA. And this is the second project that's going forward as a part of this targeted area, and this is a, a single-family subdivision. It's going to be a gated subdivision. It's going to be market-rate houses, and so they're going to utilize the city funding that the city currently has obligated District Two to accomplish this subdivision. So, again, this is at the request of individuals that want to move back into the East Jackson area but didn't really have a product in the market. So this gives them that product, as well as giving them security that a gated community would give. And now let Ms. Nell add anything that she'd like to add to that.
One of the things of this particular project that we're excited about is because it will help us to increase human resource in District Two or in East Jackson. And another thing that we're, it's private investors that have come to be a part of this, and that always is very good. So we are excited about this as well, and we, as soon as the weather breaks, we'll get started.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Don't have any questions, but I have a comment, if I may.
Sure.
Good morning to CRA District Two and Ms. Pickler. This is a red letter day with respect to housing, stabilization, and redevelopment of neighborhoods. The cluster of houses that will be built along the Whitehall corridor, the gated housing community at the EL Morgan plant. We've been waiting on this a long time, and this is going to improve our neighborhood tremendously. This is going to put some vacant lots back on the tax roll. May not be the figure that we estimated here, but there's more to come. This is just the first step. As we work and collaborate together to different housing partners, that's going to stabilize the housing in East Jackson. And those who, as Stan mentioned, could not find the type housing they wanted in East Jackson, they will be able to in about six to eight months. There's another end of the spectrum with respect to business opportunities. And Mr. Chairman, if you will, allow Mr. Boone to speak on, from the Jackson Madison County African-American Chamber, to speak on the business opportunities that's going to be happening in CRA District Two.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. When Mr. Hunt, and let me apologize for him not being here this morning, he had other business in Florida. When we first started talking about this initiative, we started talking about the business in it, and one of the things that he pointed out was simply, without human resource, without people, it's going to be hard to get businesses to come into this area. So we first, he reminded us that we need to develop a housing plan and structure first to attract a good mixture of resources back into the community that would support these businesses. And we felt like, from the African-American Chamber, that if we could get the right mixture of human resources into the community, we would be able to get businesses, people that are coming in to build business structures and hire people, they would be more likely to come. So this is why we would like to see this initiative go forward first with this housing project, and others will come and support us. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm excited, on behalf of the city of Jackson and CRA District Two, I'm elated, and I'm ready for the bulldozers to start. Thank you so much.
Ms. Nell, Clarence, thank you all for what you do, and really all the CRA who works diligently at every meeting, trying to grow our city and improve our city. Patty, thank you all for your involvement in it. Mike, thank you for being here. Any other questions, council? If not, thank you all. When Mr. Hunt, and let me apologize for him not being here this morning, he had other business in Florida. When we first started talking about this initiative, we started talking about the business in it, and one of the things that he pointed out was simply, without human resource, without people, it's going to be hard to get businesses to come into this area. So we first, he reminded us that we need to develop a housing plan and structure first to attract a good mixture of resources back into the community that would support these businesses. And we felt like, from the African American Chamber, that if we could get the right mixture of human resources into the community, we would be able to get businesses, people that are coming in to build business structures and hire people, they would be more likely to come. So this is why we would like to see this initiative go forward first with this housing project, and others will come and support us. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm excited, on behalf of the City of Jackson and CRA District Two, I'm elated and I'm ready for the bulldozers to start. Thank you so much.
Ms. Nail, Clarence, thank you all for, for what you do, and really all the CRA who, who worked diligently at every meeting trying to, trying to grow our city and improve our city. Patty, thank you all for your involvement in it. Mike, thank you for being here. Any other questions, council? If not, thank you all. Item two is the, an update from the Building Department, environmental information regarding housing abatement, demolition, presented by Building Director Tom Windbusch, and I think Lewis will join him.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
Council members. If you'll notice, I put a bit of information on the bench this morning. About the properties since July 1, 2013. As you can see, all have been pretty busy. I think this eight, nine months of, of research, work, letters, along with all the other things that the property maintenance people do, they really work hard toward this, and we've actually, we've found a different avenue. Everyone's working harder. But then again, we couldn't do this without Attorney Cobb, Attorney Reedy, Judge Anderson, and all the support we get. Ms. Honeycutt, Engineering Department, they're the ones that the house is being torn down by the city. Engineering is doing that under the direction of George Barnes. They're doing a great job. As you will see, property is demolished by the city since July 13, 2013, 23 homes. Properties demolished by owners, that's ones we had to do research, try to find people, get them into court, or by hearing in the office of the Building Department. There was 33 demolished by property owners. We have in line, after March 25th, we have eight more to be demolished by the City of Jackson. And currently, properties that we're working on, that's in, in the abatement process, there's 61 of those. And that's a process of doing the research, try to find them, locate them, send out the letters for hearings, then we do the postings in the papers for hearings, and then orders. Those could be three to six months, just depending on who they are, where they are, and if we can find them or not. So if you have any questions.
Any questions of council?
Good morning, Attorney Cobb.
Good morning, Ms. Buchanan.
Good morning, Mr. Windbusch.
Good morning.
As it relates to the properties to be demolished, March, after March 25th, most of them are in District Four, the district that I represent itself, for two of them. These are owner or city?
These would be ones that we could not find the owners, and we went through the abatement process, best I know.
So that means they will be back on the tax rolls where they can be, what I'm getting at, they can be purchased by CRA for redevelopment?
I wouldn't say that. Like I said, we went through the process, we could not find the owners. So then the city had went through the process that allowed us just to tear them down. Now where the owners are, we don't know.
Attorney Cobb, what do we have to do?
There's two ways to get to where I think you're headed. One is generally people who don't keep their houses up also don't pay their taxes, and they will be probably going through tax sales, and we're going to focus on those. Secondly, we're entitled to have a lien for the cost of the demolition, file that lien and do a official sale on the lien to bring that property back into the city. That's the first step. The second step is then disposing of that as surplus property, and I'm sure you're familiar with that process, and that is how it gets back out on the market. And as I was listening to, Mr. Wallace asked a question about the tax revenue. What I think sometimes we forget is how expensive it is for the city to own property. We get no tax revenue, but we have the privilege of cutting grass and keeping it up for the neighbors, and Ms. Honeycutt would tell you, that's, that can be fairly expensive.
I had one question, Tom. Of these 61 properties that are currently in the abatement process, all right, am I correct that if you find these owners, they'll be allowed to have time to fix them up? If you don't, the city will tear them down? Is that correct?
If we find them, correct, we will bring them to Environmental Court, and the judge will make that decision.
Uh huh. But if we don't, we tear them down? Is that correct?
And there's a rule that says if the cost of rehabilitation exceeds 75% of their value, we will require them to be demolished instead of trying to patch together junk. And, because we, we found, I think Mr. Windbusch would agree, that somebody who doesn't take care of a house generally can't be trusted to fix it up very well and just continues the, the problem.
Right, okay, thank you.
But now as far as the city tear them down, that doesn't necessarily mean we will. We will try to get them to tear it down first.
Oh, I see, okay.
Like the one on Robert Street out in your area.
Right.
That, that one should be cleaned up by the end of the week or next week.
Okay, thank you.
If it'll quit snowing.
You read my mind, you know? Thank you.
Tom, we have a list of properties that are planned to be torn down by the owners. I know we spoke about one on the corner of Forest and Campbell.
On Forest? That has been in Environmental Court for approximately a month and a half.
Okay.
It comes, I believe it comes back up this next Monday, and having a little difficulty with that, and we're going to ask the judge to approach that in a different way.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the properties that the, that the city ends up having to do something with, are any of those less than 75% where we, they should be rehabilitated instead of torn down? Or how do we handle that situation?
Well, I'd say there, there is a ordinance that says if it's 75% of the value, but, but we do have some people that do want to spend the money even at that point, and we have allowed some too.
Okay, now I'm, I'm referring to ones where we can't find the owner. The city's got to handle it.
Oh, if we can't.
And then if we look at it and realize that it could be rehabilitated, then do we just tear it down anyway?
No.
Well, we, we.
Let me ask you, because what, what we try to do is, is we have people who might be in the business of rehabilitating, and if a house can be rehabilitated, the city's first choice is to get the housing back on the market and back where it's livable. And so there's several different ways. We don't just have a, a tear it down no matter what condition it's in.
Correct, correct.
But we, 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 we explore those opportunities, and many times, if we'll get the owner and say, if you don't have the resources to fix it, get it to somebody who does. You can, you can sell it. Well, we find we have sometimes people who get stuck and just don't know what to do, don't, can't fix it but can't part with them. We kind of encourage them to do one or the other, because ultimately, if nobody will fix it, to protect the neighborhood, we've got to get it down.
Ms. Chairman, Councilman Wallace, I think you will get more answers from the next item coming up with respect to rehabilitation and emergency repair with Mr. Roston's group.
Okay, any other, any other questions from council to?
One of the questions I've got is, I'm assuming we're, we're moving as hard as we can on any of these, the city has to take over, try to get as much money back out of it as we can.
You know, realistically, there's not a lot of money in dealing with dilapidated houses. What we're trying to do is minimize the problem. And let me introduce Courtney Reedy, she's an associate attorney in my office, and she is the one that is primarily responsible for Environmental Court, and she's doing a really good job of keeping these things moving and being creative and proactive, and I want to introduce her to, to y'all and let her share the, share the credit for the work that Mr. Windbusch and she are doing together.
Mr. Chairman, the main thrust of Attorney Cobb and Mr. Windbusch is to get rid of eyesores and stabilize the communities.
If you're living next to dilapidated houses, you're the one that's being damaged. Your neighborhood's being damaged, your property bag is being damaged, that's right.
And, and I will say for the record, Mr. Chairman, that the Building Department has stepped up to the plate, and we'd like to commend your staff and the Building Department for all the hard work they're doing, but there's a lot more to be done with respect to stabilizing and cleaning up our city.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments from council?
You know, I did notice that there's a house or two on Whitehall Street, right in that area that we're trying to build, those pretty houses. So hopefully we can do something about that one. That's one you're researching now.
It is, and I think there was one torn down recently there on Whitehall and Dupree also.
So that's good.
There, there's a lot out there. There's just the process that we have to go through, and Attorney Cobb has a, a new person there, Zane. He's doing a great job on the title searches. They're, they're just coming quicker, coming faster, and that's where we have to start first.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're good? Thank you, guys. Okay, item three is an update of the use of the city's Community Development Fund regarding housing development and matter home repair. Dave Rosten.
Good morning.
Morning, Dave.
You got me a month early. I passed out a sheet earlier. It didn't say CDBG on it. It begins with program number P-10, so one sheet. Okay. Let me talk first, though, about funding sources, because I think that's the crux of a problem that we have at community development. When JHA took over the program, the operations of the community development program, we were funded on CDBG at a level of 749,000, and for that five-year period, we averaged $751,000 annually. Today, in this five-year plan, and we're in the fourth year, we're averaging 559,000. That's about a 27.2% decrease. And on the home program, from the high that we received back in oh, oh, four, to the low that we are at during 2013, that's a 45% decrease. So you see that the funding levels from CDBG and home have dropped significantly during the last two, five-year plan periods. And so we are at the point that we've had to adapt back to saving what we can save as far as the housing in neighborhoods. The rebuild, replacement cost, when we started in 98, we're about $45,000 to $60,000 per house, and it's over $100,000 today. It's about anywhere from $85 to $105 a square foot. And to build an adequate home, we're talking, beginning really around 1,300 to 1,500 square feet to house a family today. Okay. As you can see, in this five-year plan, like I said, we're in the fourth year, we've expended 499,000, almost 500,000, to do 71 minor emergency repairs. That program is essential for the homeowners that we work with, which are primarily, I would say, anywhere from 85 to 95% elderly applicants who have major system problems. Their heating goes out, their plumbing goes out, their roof goes out, and we're replacing those so they can stay in place in their homes. The same way is with the Target Rehab Program under the Home Program, where we spent 439,000, and we've only had 17 units there. That is a costly area program. It has a higher grant amount, and we're required not just to do emergency repairs, but bring that home back up to full code, city code, or Section 8 HQ standards. And so that averages really a lot more for our rehab, up close to about 20, we have a grant up to $25,000, depending on the income, so whether or not it's a combination loan or grant. If it's below 50% of median income, then it's going to be 100% grant. Knowing that we have very few applicants for that program because HUD requires you to place a lien on that house, and it has affordability period of anywhere from five years to 10 years to remain in the program. Otherwise, the homeowner would be required to pay that by. Should the homeowner pass away, that's left up to the kids. And nine times out of 10, they are basically going to abandon the structure or, well, I hate to say this, will not notify us that they've placed somebody in it. So we're always enforcing the requirements of that program. So we moved some of the home dollars over to our CHODOs such as Southwest and Jonah to do more rental properties, and what they're doing now are acquiring vacant properties that can be rehab at a smaller cost and putting them back into the rental market, of which both of them are very excellent landlords. We don't have as many problems with them because, well, be honest with you, HUD monitors me and I monitor them. That's just the way it has to go. And so they have to keep those up, and they're doing a good job of that. We just had a program we brought to y'all with Southwest where we converted some old CDBG demonstration homes and provided those to Southwest to convert over to rental properties where they can begin to get rents for those properties and help with their portfolio. The more homes that they have, the more they're going to be in business down the road when these funds disappear. The bad news on funding on home is proposed now that if you're less than $500,000 a year, they're going to eliminate you from the program and won't have to compete with state in the state program. As you can see from, I told you the drop in CDBG funds, we were well above the 500,000 mark until recently, and now we're at 240,000 estimate. So that's where we are with that, and they're doing a good job. Under the home Target Rehab, we can replace a home, and we've only had one, and that costs us $112,000. And it's very expensive, and as you can see, if we were to do replacement housing, we'd only do with our CHODOs probably one or two a year where they're able to, they've accomplished 10, and we expect a lot more out of them in providing more funds to acquire and rehab those houses that are out there that are salvageable. These are not dilapidated houses. So that's where we are with the program. Any questions?
Councilman Wallace?
CHDO, what does that stand for?
Community Housing Development Organization.
And that's rental properties, what you're saying?
Well, they can actually build on site and for homeownership and market, but then they would eat up everything for one house instead of three or four under acquisition rehab. Now, one house was acquired and rehabbed, and they can do either. And the Southwest did one on Bishop Place, I believe, and bought it, rehabbed it, and turned around and sold it. Jonah is primarily in the rental market area, but they both have the opportunity to do both. It's just the cash flow that causes what do you do?
Okay.
Ms. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Your CHODOs, as you refer them to them, I, I refer them to them as partners. The collaborative effort of Southwest, Jonah Affordable Housing.
Those are the two.
I didn't hear you mention Habitat for Humanity.
Habitat Humanities, we have worked with them over the years, helped provide off of Lincoln Street, that, that subdivision that's out there now. And we've provided them some NSP-1 money. But they, and I've worked with Terry before, but they have a problem qualifying as what's called a participating, no, we're the participating, just a CHODO, on the guidelines of HUD. There are certain memberships of your board that had to be met in order to be a CHODO, and they do not meet that criteria. But we've been able to provide them some funds to help continue their program. And when Patty talked about clustering, you know, we've got to build, it's not just a matter of housing, it's a matter of community, it's a matter of neighborhoods. And we've lost a lot of that neighborhood fabric in the rebuilding of homes. The resources just aren't here through these two programs to do that. We're just trying to keep it going, to keep, keep the preservation of what housing we can. So whether it will be an infusion of a large amount of dollars just to do the 23 that Tom talked about, you're talking 2.3 to 2.5 million dollars. We just don't have it.
That's, that's the reason it's important for the community partners with respect to housing, for the blending and braiding of funds. That's why the collaborative effort that you all are doing will be so helpful, because we know about funding and how it's. because we know about funding and how it's going now.
And that was primarily one of the CRA. And six-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, we talked about as a one-oh-eight loan.
Yeah.
It is CDBG dollars. And that was a very wise move about four years ago to go that avenue. We, you know, just to talk about the rental properties in District One that have been created and the NSP area, all of that ties back to CDBG eligible funding. And now we're looking at District Two and the six-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand that Southwest will use. And so that's where your CDBG dollars are being leveraged as much as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Ms. Nail?
I apologize, but I didn't know that our private investor was here. I'm going to ask him to come up. That's going to do the homes in the Morgan area.
Sure, you want to introduce him? Good morning. Would you introduce yourself to the record, please?
Yes, my name is Harley Morrissey, and I'm here from Vital Developments. And we were approached by David Hunt. He felt like for this area in District Two, that to have some private money go into this development would be advantageous to this area. And the, after a meeting with the realtors, Tara Skinner and Eden Smith, and getting a feel for that area, we felt like we could build some higher-end homes, you know, in the hundred-and-twenty to hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar range, some energy-efficient homes with enclosed garages, because that's what that area seems to be in need of, and houses from fifteen-hundred to eighteen-hundred square feet. So in working with David and Ms. Nail and, and with the realtors, we were very optimistic about building this gated community in this area, hoping to get people into the area that will help stimulate the economy. And moving forward, we're hoping this is just the beginning for us, that we can extend this to other areas in East and South Jackson.
Okay, very good. We appreciate your partnership with the, with the CRA. Any, any questions or comments from counsel to our development? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Dave, thank you for that update. Item five, under Board Appointments, Environmental Advisory Appeals Board. We have the reappointments of Joel McAlexander and Eddie O'Neil. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion, second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And also the appointments of Bobby Cole, Jerry Day, James Krennis, and Martha White.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Under our Keep Jacksonville Commission, the reappointment of Keith Wilson.
So moved.
Motion, second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And we have three under the Jackson Transit Authority, reappointments of Richard Donnell, Lavelle Hayes, and Donna Hill.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much. Item six is Legend Amendments, and Mr. Bell is present.
Yeah, one amendment this month. This is a transfer to Pringles Park Capital for the purchase of a Gator tractor to be used at the Pringles Park facility in the amount of seventy-five, seventy-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
A motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nail. Before we get to the final item, because usually when we finish that, everybody votes, let me, let me ask our, our city attorney to come up and just brief the counsel and ask any, have you all asked any questions as it relates to the Attorney General's opinion on the city's position as far as payment of the mixed drink liquor funding that we've elected to do for a number of years?
Didn't know it was going to be a pop quiz, Mayor, but there was an opinion that came out that said our options on how to deal with that are limited. Let me just kind of lay out the problem simply. When liquor-by-the-drink law was passed, there was a sharing formula that was supposed to be used, where some of the money was to go to the school system. Many cities, including us, did, were not informed of that change in the formula and did not follow the formula. What we have done is we have voluntarily given the school systems many times that amount through conceding the increase in the local option tax, providing for SRO officers and some other things. And while I think in talking to the mayor, I know he's very supportive of adequate funding for the schools, the budgets that were done and the concessions, the additional concessions that were voluntarily made, were done with the expectation that we would keep the money that we had been keeping. And so we're continuing to look at our options of what is a fair offset of what we were supposed to have done versus what we actually did voluntarily. And so Ms. Bell, I think, has come up with some suggested ways to deal with that. Mayor, also, and I haven't been following this closely, but there was trying to find a legislative solution to the problem. I don't know if that's still continuing and, but.
I think that's out the window this year.
So there was an Attorney General's opinion that said you can't do this, you can't do that. But there were some other things that the city had done voluntarily for many years over and above what we're required to do. Is that a fair summary?
Next step by the city from here?
Well, we're going to look and see what it is that we've done that we should be entitled to get credit for as a way to have a fair equalization of what we've done voluntarily in exchange for what we didn't do because of, we were not given the right formula to use.
Any questions of Mr. Cobb on it? Councilman Wallace?
Currently, we are paying, so we don't get worse. We're paying currently.
We are.
Are we still funding the school resource officers in addition to that?
Yes.
Should we be?
Funding for, correct me if I'm wrong here, we're funding for totally by the city, and two, two more are being funded, one half. Is that reasonable? By the schools, okay.
So we're doing four, they're doing two.
We have four that were totally.
I guess for the current year, I don't guess, since we budgeted that, we totally do that. But for, for next year, we adjusting our budget for that?
Well, that decision would be, would be up to counsel as, as you meander through next year's budget. But it's certainly my intention at this point, if, if we go with a full three-point-two million, we're, we're going to struggle, obviously. It's going to be a challenge for us to meet that. So I think counsel can expect a budget with, with no school resource officers coming from the city for next year. Doesn't mean we don't necessarily have them. School Department can either fund them or ask the Madison County Sheriff's Department to provide deputies. Madison County is the funding body for education. They certainly have access to almost two-hundred deputies that they could use in the schools.
Of the dollar amount that, that we pay on an annual basis, how much of that would be covered by school resource officers? Are we close to the same or the mixed?
You've left legal and gone to audit. You've left legal and gone to audit.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
With respect to the mixed drink issue, if we could have some times, some facts, and some figures so we can, the council can come up with a rational decision, I think that'll be favorable.
Well, we, we've got the figures. We, we know, and I think they've been audited, have they not?
I mean, the council, the council with, as it relates to, so we can, because there'd be some other proposals with respect to mixed drink.
Well, we're going to take the next step to see if, if our side of the expenses would, could be, would offset the total that we owe. If that's permissible, then obviously that's the direction we'll go in as far as what we have voluntarily gave the, the county school system, Jackson Madison County School System, out of the general fund. And once we get a determination on that from someone in authority, then I think we can go from there. But until we, until we get there, then it'll be, it'll be difficult. Okay?
Do you think that decision will come before we have to look at next year's budget? Do you have any?
I do.
Okay.
Any questions, comments from counsel? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Final item is consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
There being no further bids, meeting is adjourned.